It is February 11th of 2020 at 6:30. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened in the closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. We have a full dius. It is 6:30, and I'm calling the meeting to order. Y'all, we are so lucky. I'm so excited, I can hardly stand it. We have with us tonight three Girl Scouts from Troop 42805. We have Elizabeth Hoover, come up and stand right here and turn around. And she brought with her her friend Isabel Kessler and Jamie Green. Other side of Isabel, so we can see you. Thank you. Elizabeth's favorite subject is math, so she rocks and she thinks she wants to go into the Air Force. All of these young ladies are in third grade at Emil Elementary. Isabel likes reading and she can't decide between being a veterinarian and a pediatrician, so I think that's some big decisions ahead of her. And Jamie likes reading and science, and she's either going to be a veterinarian or be an EMS like her mom and dad. So, these young ladies make me know that the future is in very, very good hands. So if everyone will please rise, these young girls are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Turn around.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one indivisible.
And ladies, if you would please turn around and repeat the Girl Scout promise for the audience.
On my honor, I will strive to serve God and my country, to help others at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law.
Let's give these girls a round of applause. Great job. If you will please remain standing, Chaplain Wellington is going to lead us in our invocation tonight. Chaplain Wellington?
Good evening to the city council and to all gathered here today. Would you bow with me for a word and prayer? Our Father, who art in heaven, holy and righteous is your name. I come before you in the name of Jesus to thank you for another day. Thank you for sparing our lives. Thank you for our health and our strength. Thank you for giving us another chance. I ask that you will forgive us of our sins for the bad things that we did, that we said, and that we thought about. I pray that you will look upon the leadership of our nation and especially our city council. I pray that you will give them the wisdom and the knowledge that they need, Lord, reveal to their minds the answers they need that will benefit the whole body and not just one part. I pray for our police department and all law enforcement, that you, Lord, would encourage their hearts and let them know that they are your ministers against lawlessness and to help and defend the helpless. Let them know that their work is not in vain. I pray that you will keep our children and grandchildren safe while in school as well as those that are there to teach them. And Lord, help us to let that light shine in us more, that light that shines in us when tragedy strikes. We don't see color, gender, or political persuasion. All we see is another person in need of our help, love, and compassion. I pray that you would help us to remember that when the meeting is over, that we are still members of one community, neighbors and friends, and church members, and that we all belong to a nation that can't and won't be divided. I thank you, Lord, and give you all the praise, all the glory, all the honor. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Chaplain Wellington, not only for a wonderful invocation but for all you do for our police departments. Very, very much appreciated. All right. He may regret that. Okay, we're moving on to Mayor's Report, and apparently I have the power, so...or I don't. Okay, no, that's better. Before I get started, one thing I want to talk about, I had a citizen that shared with me a document that came out from CenterPoint Energy, and it's...I believe CenterPoint would say that they are trying to provide opportunities for their members to know what insurance costs to be able to take care of the line from the public right-of-way to their house. The way that it is written, I have some citizens in the community that believe it doesn't really imply that it's an option, and it feels more like, you know, sometimes you get that mail, "You must answer immediately," time-sensitive or whatever. And they expressed an opinion to me, that a citizen expressed an opinion to me, that it is written in such a way that there are some folks signing up for this, not realizing that it is not by any means mandatory. We all know, we have...we get scam phone calls, we get funky mail. Each and every one of us have an obligation to read it and make a good decision for our household. I'm not here to tell you whether you need it or you don't need it. I'm here to tell you it is not absolutely required. And if you have questions, you can call CenterPoint directly. If you have questions about any of your mail, I would encourage you to...Alan would say, "Seek legal advice." Or maybe kids or parents or whatever, go to somebody that you trust if you get a piece of mail that seems a little out of the ordinary. And that's just kind of a good rule for all of us all the time. But I had one citizen that was concerned that there were several, to be very honest with you, some elderly people in the community that just thought it was a mandatory thing they had to do. And when you're counting your pennies, you need to be careful about that. So I just wanted to mention that. Moving on to my Mayor's Report, I had to kind of giggle that I did 30 events in 30 days in January. It was kind of a busy January. That upper left-hand corner, that's the three mayors, that's Mayor Saunders of Smithville and Mayor Cannon of Elgin, and we were all there for the MLK Walk. It was a gorgeous, gorgeous day and a really neat event. You can see all the wonderful people that participated. Several of council members were there, and it was...we had a really fun time. Was at the Business Expo that was held at the Hampton Inn. They had several vendors participate in that. That was a great deal. The Ascension seat and ribbon cutting was a really fun event, and a whole lot of people attended that. And it's banquet season, isn't it, council? We've all been at several banquets. I went to the Sportsman's Banquet, and I also attended the BISD Board Meeting to give them a proclamation on BISD Board Members, but the reason there's a picture of Superintendent Edwards was because that night was his birthday. So I really appreciate the work that Mr. Edwards does for our community. The planned events through tonight, I did all of those things. So if you've seen me out and about, that's what I've been doing since I turned in my report. And the future events, Friday is Valentine's, just for all the men and women in the audience, Friday is Valentine's. Thought that was worth mentioning. I...Speak Up Speak Out is a program very similar to Generation Citizen, and I have been asked to judge those projects, and I'll be doing that that day. February 21st is the Children's Advocacy Center fundraising event. On the 23rd, I'll be at Bastrop High School Senior Serve, and then I have a couple of other meetings. But there is something else going on this weekend, and that is, it is the Great Backyard Bird Count. And at our last council meeting, we talked about that Bastrop was one of four cities in the state of Texas that was named a Bird City. Dorothy Scarnulus, we're going to have to get her autograph. She has been interviewed on TV. She did a KUT interview, has been involved in some of the press releases, and just her and the entire Bird City Coalition has done a tremendous amount of work. So the 14th through the 17th is the 23rd Annual Great Backyard Bird Count. So if you would like to participate in that, you can look, go to birdcount.org and be a part of the Bird Happenings. And that is my Mayor's Report. I'm going to start at this end of the dius. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't have a whole lot to say, but I would say that I regret not making to the MLK festivities, but I had to do an MRI that day, and the MRI did not agree with my defibrillator, so I had some medical issues and couldn't make it over to Elgin.
But we're glad that you're feeling better in here tonight.
Me too.
Councilmember Rogers?
I believe that Saturday is a ribbon cutting for Main Street, correct?
Friday.
Friday, Friday, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So I wanted to make sure that Main Street knew that they're having the ribbon cutting of their sidewalk event.
For the Main Street rehabilitation, and is it at 2:00?
2:00.
2:00, 2:00 PM, and we'll be at Ferry Park. Thank you. Appreciate you bringing that up. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. As liaison to the Bastrop Art and Public Places, we met last week. They're hard at work on their two-dimensional and three-dimensional art calls, which they do every year. You might...I know you've noticed the sculptures around town and the artwork in City Hall. That's all part of what BAIPP does. They're working hard on that, and they are...we will be talking about the master plan for art in the city shortly.
Yes, sir.
And that's been something they've been working on for quite a while, so we're excited about where that's going to go.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
Well, believe it or not, I was asked by some citizens why I didn't make more comments during city council member reports. So to make those in the audience or outside happy, I made some notes, and I have a few things. I'll be brief still, though, but just to mention some comments, but of things that have happened for me and for the city in the last few weeks and upcoming events. I wanted to say that we got a great kickoff, the Black History kickoff at the library, and I wanted to thank the Bastrop Juneteenth Committee and the mayor for being there and doing the proclamation and making her remarks. Mayor Protem Nelson for dropping by, and the Bastrop Public Library and their staff, especially Becca Sexton for coordinating and providing a space for that event to occur. The students from VHS and from Cedar Creek High School. And a special shout-out to Sherri Gilmore for those delicious cookies that she baked for the event. The Lost Pines Art Center that night also had their Art After Dark reception, and it featured Brian "Bighty Man" Joseph. And if you haven't seen his artwork, it's just exquisite. It's also honoring Black History Month, and they had a reception for him on the 8th. The same night, the Bastrop County African American Cultures Association did a program featuring music, dance, and spoken word, and that was at Mount Rose Missionary Baptist Church. Main Street had a sidewalk chalk art contest, which had 13 downtown businesses drawing different types of artwork on their main...in front of their businesses, and it was really colorful and very nice, and it was a sight to see. The Opera House and all the groups downtown are doing a lot of different things that are coming up, and they also had Mr. DC Cornish in town for the second time. He's an award-winning storyteller, and he was there Friday...Saturday afternoon for his one-man show. Two things that I would like to end with, and one is, on this Sunday at the Opera House, there will be a special discussion group for the community and a screening of the Netflix movie, American Son. And we'll have one of the actors, Eugene Lee, from the Broadway show and from the film, will be there to discuss his association with that film, and we're inviting people from law enforcement, from the churches, and from elected officials to attend that, and to the general public. It'll be at the Opera House. And I had one thing that some citizens asked me to bring up and ask for a report on, possibly at our next council meeting. They were wanting an update on the police chief vacancy and how we were handling it, and since it's such an important position, they were wondering about maybe the next council meeting if we could have an update on...
I can take care of that right now, and we can post it. I had a conversation with several people, and we will be filling the city manager position before we fill the police chief position. So that's the...got all kinds of recommendations that that was the proper protocol and the right thing to do. So the status of the police chief filling that position is that it will be done after we fill the city manager.
I felt that's what would be happening, but I mean, they wanted to hear something from the dius, and so therefore, they've now heard it.
Yay, go Chief Nagy. All right. Anything else, Councilmember Jackson?
No, except Valentine's Day, there is a special Valentine's Cabaret at the Opera House, and if you don't have anything else to do that evening, it's going to be kind of nice with music and a great dinner. So I'd invite you to attend.
Councilmember Jackson is going to be performing, is he not?
Yes, Dr. Jackson will be performing.
All right. All right, we're done with council member reports. City Manager, Mr. Jobe, you've got some information for us tonight.
I do. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am going to need that clicker, yes, thank you. I thought we would start with an update on some of the capital projects that we have going on, just to make everybody aware. This may be...this was something you won't see every month as part of the city manager's report. We'll start doing it quarterly. I'll probably bring those back to you. But I did want to just catch everybody up, tell them how busy we are, what's going on. So we'll start with that, and then I'd like to give a few minutes to Chief Nagy at the end, so he can talk about some social media and some how to report a crime. So let's get started. So here's what we have going on. This is our wastewater treatment plant, and I'm going to...it's a little rough to see on that particular aerial, so let me show something on white. Maybe that's better, maybe it's not. But that's the first phase that's under design of the wastewater treatment plant number three, that's located off of 304. And this is just a quick update on where we're at. February, March, we are in...we're under review right now by the TCEQ. We expect the bidding and award process to be somewhere from March to May. July to August, we would award and complete the notice to proceed, and our still-estimated completion date is September of 2021. So we're on track. Things are moving forward, and we'll keep going. Again, the sewer line replacement, if you'll remember this, we talked about it in last year's budget. It's actually a replacement of the sewer lines on Main Street, Maple, Mesquite, Magnolia, and Locust. The project's near closeout. We actually had to hold up on some manholes that we were waiting on, but it's expected to be completed by the end of February. We have...we also have some in-house work that's going to happen there, and that's a water line replacement that the staff's going to put in. We expect it to begin that in the next seven days, but with the weather, it may be a little closer to 14, maybe a little longer. The estimated time to complete the work will take three weeks, and then some of the stuff the city crews are going to handle is notifying the citizens, coordinating the mail delivery and the garbage collection. This was exciting stuff. This was actually pour number 10 of the tower that's going in on Highway 20.
Yeah, that's cool.
250,000-gallon elevated storage tank. There's a 250,000-gallon ground storage tank as well, but there's no cool pictures of that, so I wanted to show this. This is a pretty big deal. We've only been talking about it for four years, so that's about halfway up. We've got another 10 or 11 pours.
And Trey, you might remind everyone, the purpose of that is to allow to have fire flow, correct?
That's correct. So that'll...your fire flow on the west end of town also help with stabilizing pressure and things of that nature. Here we have, and we haven't talked about this in a while, but we, again, in last year's budget, we commissioned a study from Fries and Nichols. This is for the wastewater treatment plant and the transmission line. We did some preliminary engineering report that's been completed. You'll...we'll bring this back either in a future workshop if needed, but we'll bring it back to council on the...at the 25th meeting, so we can hear from Fries and Nichols. That'll give us an update on what they found during this preliminary engineering study. The Main Street Rehabilitation Project, I think we've all heard a lot about that. There's a ribbon cutting again on Friday.
Groundbreaking. We'll cut the ribbon when we're done.
That's correct.
But we'll break the ground.
You're absolutely right. So we're going to get our gold shovels, and we're going to dig in some dirt and have a groundbreaking on Friday at 2:00. And then the start date is February 17th. The completion date expected is to be August 2020. So we're still on schedule. Wanted to talk a little about the street maintenance program. It's not necessarily a capital program, but there is some stuff going on. So if you've been in Riverside Grove, you've seen some signs. If you lived in Hunters Cross, then you saw them put out signs. And what they're doing right now is a full-depth repair and some crack seal January through March. Once that's done, when the weather's favorable, the crew will come back in June and July, and they will chip seal the roads that we have scheduled to chip seal. Drainage, again, a big deal. Everyone knows that the Gills Branch improvements for the engineering was awarded just a couple of months ago. So we have...a write-of-entry letter has already been sent to all the residents up and down Gills Branch. So if you see people surveying, that's what they're doing. We're going to have a kickoff meeting this Friday, and then we'll get you some more information as this progresses. See, there's the write-of-entries. So just to give you some quick dates, the engineering, February 2020, and survey and design, March through December. Also, more drainage, of course. All the projects that we started working on 2015 and 2016, we actually applied for some emergency management grants to the Texas Department of Emergency Management. Pine Street's bid opening was actually today. The Jasper and Newton will be on for award. We opened that last week, and hopefully they'll just proceed within 30 days. The construction plans are still under review by TETM because they had a question about where the dirt was going, and they wanted to make sure it was in a designated area, and that needs to be approved. But other than that, the majority of these are...projects are right on schedule, and I say on schedule, after the three years we took for the state to approve it. Now we're getting on schedule. The downtown River Loop, we have partially executed SBA about February the 6th. I've actually sent that off to Tech dot already. I'm waiting to hear back. Hopefully, February, March 2020, we'll see the bidding and award phase March to April. And on the bottom, it's not...has nothing to do with the River Loop, but we also had a bid opening February the 7th for the skate park, so we expect to get that off within the next...the notice to proceed within the next 30 to 45 days. With that, I'll take any questions, or we'll just give this to Chief Nagy, and he can...
Mr. Jobe, I really appreciate that. It's great to get an update and an overview. For anyone that's in the audi...if you look at our annual budget, which is online, the CIP section starts on page 231, so if you want some additional details about the projects on cost, and some of the pictures where the sewer lines were a little bit hard to see, maybe, but there's additional details, and I would encourage you to start with page 230. And on Main Street, the one thing, Mr. Jobe, that you and I visited about was with a completion date of August, there was...you said that you and the team are well aware of the Juneteenth Parade and the potential homecoming parade, and you've got a plan for that, correct?
That's correct. And Ms. Rebecca over there, Ms. Main Street, she's definitely taken care of that and has not let anybody forget when every event's going to happen. So not just Juneteenth, but she has them all scheduled, and we've worked the schedule around that.
Great. Great, great, great. Any questions on the CIP projects?
I saw that you have the Public Works retain...retention pawns in review. How long will it be in review? I don't...I'm not sure how review works.
We have sent off the letter of map revision of the LOMER to TETM. I expect to hear back in the next 30 days, and then we...I would imagine we would go to bid on that. The plans are designed, everything's ready to go. We're just waiting some additional environmental approval from the state.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Yes, I just want to make a point to say that it's great to see half an associates walking around town and doing the survey and so forth, and makes me feel good. I can tell people, these are the folks that's going to take care of our drainage situation.
That's right.
Absolutely. Mr. Ennis?
I'd like to compliment Mr. Jobe on this report. It's nice to have a proactive report, and instead of us having to come to you and ask for it, that you provide it to us. Thank you.
All right. And did you...are you going to let Chief Nagy talk about it on the next item, or are you giving him the last half of yours?
He can have the last minute, or he's the next item, so we can talk about both. It's up to you.
Chief Nagy?
Just to be a quick 30 seconds. Thank you, City Manager. I just wanted to give the public a friendly reminder not to report crime through our Facebook and/or other social media, even the avenues. It really kind of causes us some procedural issues along with delays because we simply can't monitor it 24/7. So if the public sees a crime, if they see an emergency, or if they even see a non-emergency, we urge them to call 911. By calling 911, it puts them to the Bastrop County Communications Center, will dispatch a Bastrop PD officer. I do have some numbers in case they would want it to report non-emergencies or administrative issues. So the Communications Center dispatch is 512-303-7000, and the Bastrop PD's direct line is 512-332-8600. And a couple of hours ago, I actually posted a Facebook post, which kind of reminds the citizens exactly what I just spoke about tonight. It also has those phone numbers on there.
Chief Nagy, often if you call 911, they say, "What's the nature of your emergency?" And you can say, "It's a non-emergency. I'm trying to report an event or something." Is that correct?
Yes, you can say, "It's a non-emergency. I need to report handicap parking." So everything really goes to the centralized location, so we're not like Austin where you have a true dedicated non-emergency line. 911 covers non-emergencies and then, of course, emergencies.
Great. Chief Nagy, I was really proud of him and then scared for him all at the same time. He has created an account that is actually him on...was...did you do that on Nextdoor?
I did that on Nextdoor, yes.
And he's gotten a lot of followers and a lot of comments, and so we had a conversation about because he has a profile on Nextdoor, you can't report crimes to the profile on Nextdoor and think that's the same as calling 911. So he's absolutely...wants to be available to the public, and we want the public to get to know Chief Nagy, but we have to make sure that we continue to use 911 to report crimes.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Well, you can just stay right there because you are up next. Anything else, Mr. Jobe?
No, ma'am, we're finished. Thank you.
All right, council, we're moving on to item 4D. Receive annual racial profiling report from the Bastrop Police Department. Chief Nagy?
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm going to give you the 2019 Bastrop Annual Racial Profiling Report. Back in 2001, Texas enacted a racial profiling law, and in that, they required us to adopt a policy, and some of those policies include the following. We must clearly define acts of what is racial profiling. We strictly prohibit our officers from engaging in racial profiling. We implement a process to investigate any racial profiling complaints. We provide public education. And lastly, require corrective action upon investigation if an officer is determined to have engaged in racial profiling. So in 2019, we made 3,474 traffic stops. During those, we provided a warning, a written citation, a warning and arrest, or a citation and arrest. We track the driver's gender, their race and their ethnicity, their race and ethnicity if it was known prior to the actual traffic stop, a reason for and location of that traffic stop, was a search conducted, and if it was consensual, and lastly, was contraband located during those searches. This is going to be a breakdown of gender, so approximately 44% of the stops were female, and then 56% of stops were male. This is going to be a breakdown of race and ethnicity, so Alaskan, Native American was just about 1%, along with Asian Pacific Islanders, about 1%, Black African American was just over 10%, Hispanic and Latino, about 15%, and lastly, white was 73% of the stops. This is going to be a comparison compared to the percentages that I just listed to the 2010 census. We still use the 2010 census because it is going to be the last official census. So to the left is going to be kind of a bar graph, just so you have some visual comparisons of what the percentage of stops was compared to the 2010 census. Any questions on that? All right. This is going to be race and ethnicity known prior to the traffic stop. And a good example of prior to a traffic stop is possibly if I make a traffic stop on someone on Saturday and they don't have a driver's license...I'm sorry. If...so race and ethnicity known prior traffic stop, if I pull up next to someone that has expired registration sticker, and I pull alongside them, I might know as I'm looking at their registration sticker that I might have known their race. So that happened about 20...that happened 25 times, so just under 1%. The traffic stop look...the traffic stop reasons, this is going to be a moving traffic stop occurred most of the time at about 75%. A moving traffic violation is going to be speeding. Pre-existing... Pre-existing knowledge occurred just under one percent, and a pre-existing knowledge might be the one, I was just, or the example, if I pull you over and you don't have a driver's license on Saturday, and I find you again driving on Sunday, I'm gonna know pre-existing that you didn't get your driver's license done on Saturday or that Sunday. Violation of traffic law, or reference your vehicle, that happened about twenty-five percent of the time. This is gonna be example of your, you don't have a headlight, or you have a bad taillight. And then lastly, a violation of law occurred just under one percent of the time, and a good example of that's gonna be driving while intoxicated. This is locations, so just about sixty-eight percent of the time, we stopped you on a city street. The county road was just about five times throughout the year, and in private property, the other. Sometimes, if a traffic stop begins on a city street, let's say Burleson Crossing, and they pull into the Lowe's parking lot, that's gonna be considered private property. Or sometimes, we stop on a city street, and they pull into their private driveway, that's gonna be the other portion there. And that occurred just about three percent of the time. And then lastly, our state highways, we stopped persons about twenty-eight percent of the time.
I have a funky question for you, if you don't mind. So Chestnut, is that a state highway? Because it's not our road, or do you consider it a city street? How do you guys categorize it?
It will be the highway, so it would be technically, it would be a loop or a state highway.
So Chestnut, you consider a state highway, because it's Loop one-fifty?
Yes.
So Chestnut, ninety-five, so I, I'm not surprised that number is as high as it is, given, given the state roads that we have. Okay, thank you.
So these are our traffic stop searches. We searched eighty-eight times compared to the three thousand four hundred and seventy-four stops, so it's just a little over two and a half percent. And then reason for the searches. So you have a consent search, which occurred just about eighteen percent, and a consent search is oftentimes, we might just simply ask someone, can we search their vehicle? And that's can be based, if we see someone, a good example is where they're leaving a house that we suspect is selling drugs. So it might not have probable cause, we might have reasonable suspicion, we may ask them to search their vehicle. Contraband in plain view, that didn't happen this year. A good example of that might be a pipe that was used to consume source, an illicit drug, and we see that in plain view, it's just on their seat, it's in their lap. Incident to arrest that occurred about twelve percent of the time. An incident to arrest is anytime we arrest you, we're gonna search you after that fact. And inventory, an inventory is generally towards a vehicle, that occurred about nine percent of the time. And anytime that you are arrested out of a vehicle, we will inventory your vehicle per our policy. And what that does is it saves the police department, it also saves a tow truck driver and yourself from claims that we might have stolen something out of your, out of your, so it's, it's listed in actually a sheet. And then lastly, probable cause, that occurred the most at about sixty percent of the time, and this is gonna be that if we detect the odor of burnt marijuana, that allows us probable cause to begin that search. The searches continues, so of the eighty-eight searches, we located contraband fifty-three percent of the time, so just about sixty percent. And this is what we located. So we located alcohol, about three percent, then our highest was gonna be some sort of illicit drugs, about fifty-four, fifty-five percent. Other, about three percent, other might be say fraudulent credit cards, or it could be that marijuana pipe that we, that we had discovered. Currency, that just happened once. And then lastly, combined weapons and stolen property at about five percent of the time. As always, we accept complaints. If you believe that you have been a victim of racial profiling, you can come in Monday through Friday, eight to five, or twenty-four hours, you can always call dispatch, and you can ask to speak to a supervisor, and they will go ahead and get that started. And of course, we always take compliments of well, if we do a good job. And that'll be it.
Well, you just did a very good job in presenting that information. Chief Nagy, any questions, Council, for Chief Nagy? All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, Council, we're on the top of page two, we're on item four E, receive an update on the project submitted to Campo for the regional transportation plan. Mr. Job, are you gonna let Tony do it? All right, Tony, you're on.
Evening, Mayor, Council. So this, again, this is an update for the Campo twenty forty-five Regional Transportation Plan, just an update. We submitted Agnes Street Extension, Jessica Place Extension, and the Old Iron Bridge for consideration or being added to this plan. As a reminder, this is a future long-term planning, there's no money associated or identified for this yet, you just have to get on the plan, so that when it is identified, you're eligible for it. So first one was Agnes Street. As a reminder, a new arterial road connecting three-oh-four to Hasler, approximately fifteen-hundred feet, just created another, an alternate east-west route south of, of seventy-one. The main benefit for this would be if there's an evacuation or something like that, there's an alternate route to take if seventy-one gets, gets blocked. Out of a score of a hundred, this one only received a score of forty-seven.
Why do you think it scored so low?
Let me go through the three first, and then I will address that, if you, if I could, please. Jessica Place, it's also a new arterial road, this is similar to Agnes' extension, but it's on the north side of seventy-one. It's serving a similar purpose, where if there's an evacuation, it provides that alternate east-west conveyance. And that one scored a forty-two. The rehabilitation of the historic Old Iron Bridge, it's, the bridge is currently closed, and due to deterioration, it scored an eighty-nine. This was the highest scoring project for a small town in the region. So looking through the first two pages of the report, it's basically City of Austin and Capitol Metro, and then our project. So it was one of the highest ones. So Mayor, to your question, I talked to the co-chair of the TAC, Julia Cleary, and basically, it, it seems like the way that the scoring is set up really favors active transportation projects. So looking at the first two pages, kind of everything above the Old Iron Bridge, it's all, almost exclusively active transportation, and some kind of metro rail or transit-related. There's not much roadway. The two roadway projects really didn't fit that target criteria, what Campo was looking for, what their criteria was geared towards. It's a duplicate, kind of alternate route for an existing route that's already there. And so the suggestion that she had, that, that I agree with, is that we get in with Campo earlier, when they're creating those criteria, and try to influence that. I know she's influenced that some with trying to get more recognition for fire evacuations, emergency evacuations, and I, I'll continue to do that in my role as, as an alternate on the, on the TAC, trying to do that, that same thing. Influence the scoring criteria to better suit and, and take some of the, I guess, advantage away from the large City of Austin projects.
Mayor Protim Nelson, since you're our Campo rep, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, it, it concerned me greatly, that the, that the top twenty, of the twenty, top twenty-two projects were City of Austin.
Yes, sir.
And I've, I've made inquiries with the executive director of Campo, as to why that is, and how we can remedy that.
Yes, sir.
And, and the issue is, is the fact that the, originally, when the Campo and their governance process was put into place, it, it was very heavily Travis County, with some Williamson County, subsequent to that, counties such as Bastrop County have been added to it, but the numbers don't reflect that on, on either the TAC or on the Policy Board. And so we're going to make changes on that, and Julia is absolutely correct, we're going to have to work to influence that process and the scoring. And, and I'm trying to put together a consortium of small cities in the, in the Campo region to kind of bring to the forefront our concerns. And, and one of the primary concerns is the small city representative on, on the Campo Policy Board is a Travis County Commissioner, which is quite strange to me, and, and we need to remedy that for sure. I really appreciate you reaching out to Julia, I'd like for us to continue doing that on the, on the, the TAC side, the Transportation Advisory Committee side, and I, I will work with you and continue to work with the Policy Board people to, to make some changes, because, just because it's not an active roadway doesn't mean it needs, it need not be an active roadway. So that's, that's it, Madam Mayor.
Well, I, I'm sure, Council, to both of you, Mayor Protim, and also to Tony, if, if Council needs to take any action, if we need to pass a resolution, if we need to provide information about it being a part of our emergency routes, you know, we, that's been the discussion. If there's an issue on seventy-one, our residents are completely landlocked. So if, if it, we don't wanna be in your way, but if there are some things that we can do that would be helpful, I, I know that we stand ready to, to be helpful. Meanwhile, with such a great score on the bridge, I'm sure we will be pursuing funding mechanisms with a project that scored that well. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Councilmember Rogers, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was gonna ask a question, like, you, you, Mayor, you had asked why the, the other two had scored low, why do you think, not that I was complaining that the bridge scored higher, what, what do you think was the fine points that they liked that make that score higher?
I, I think it's-
I mean, it's not an existing transit-
Sure. I think it's related to it being active transportation, being that it, its use, its intended use would be for pedestrians and bicycles, that, that sort of thing, rather than vehicular transportation.
Okay, I was just curious.
They're into that multimodal stuff.
That's right. And then my last slide is the schedule, just an update for where everything is. We've had the draft plan put out there, and so that, that's kind of, the numbers that are, that are reported on are all draft numbers. Subject should change, not likely to, but subject to change, and then it kind of works its way down, down the rest of the schedule, just as an update.
Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I'm glad we're talking about the old bridge project, because there've been a lot of questions on where does it stand, what are we doing, where, when are, when's it gonna get fixed, et cetera, et cetera. And I just think it's important to, to make everyone here and at home know that we're working on it. And our main concern is to try to find ways to fund it without saddling our, our citizens with that twelve million dollar cost.
That's correct. Our citizens have paid money to the federal government, and we need to get some of those tax dollars back in the community and work to repair that bridge, so that we're not having to reach into our own pocket is, is a good method for that. Mayor Protim Nelson, did you have something else to say?
Yeah, because it did score high, and I don't, didn't mean to sound so negative, because it did score high, that as, as money's come available regionally, that, that the chances of us getting the Old Iron Bridge into the Transportation Improvement Plan is, is very good-
Yes.
-over the next year. I'd like to accelerate that, and then there are several different funding sources that we're looking at, where perhaps we might be able to, to, to access to do that, but just getting it scored high, so that we can easily convert it over to the Transportation Improvement Program, rather than a twenty forty-five project, is actually a, a very, very much a boon to the city.
Good step in the right direction, right? All right, Council, any other questions for Tony? Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. All right, Council, we're just gonna keep moving down, we're on Work Sessions, we're on item five A, Discussion Regarding Establishing an Arts and Cultural Commission Working Group to Begin the Implementation of the Cultural Arts Master Plan. Trey did a great job, Mr. Job, I appreciate you including the entire camp plan, that's one of the reasons the packet was thick, but I thought he was really smart, because if it hadn't been in there, then we would have been looking for it to have it for a reference, so it was easy that it's just right there, and for those of us that were going through the packet, you can just skip past those two hundred pages or whatever, if you didn't need to reread the plan. The, there, as, as a result of that plan, and just a reminder to Council, BAIPP accepted that plan, and Council, we voted to accept that plan. Accepting it is not the same as approving it and saying, we are now going to follow every single recommendation that was a part of the plan, and that's why we very specifically accepted the plan. As we move forward, and Council, we've had discussions before, we know that our hot funds, that we're giving them to the Museum and Visitor Center, and the Art Guild, and the Opera House, and those folks have come and made presentations to us, and, and so much of that is coordinating together and a part of our cultural arts. As we move to implementation, I went out on a limb and decided that the six of us did not want to be involved in every day and every step of that implementation plan. Was that a correct assumption, Councilmember Peterson? And so thankfully, the liaison to BAIPP, Councilmember Ennis, has agreed to chair a task force, and according to the charter, we can create boards and task force whenever we want. And I have asked Councilmember Ennis, and I also attended the BAIPP meeting, I think it's important that we, we do a shift, that we're talking about the entire town, and whether it's nonprofits, whether it's private entities, whether it's film, there's, there's a big umbrella out there. And I know that the fantastic work that BAIPP did, because they were the board that took, took on that Cultural Arts Master Plan and worked with the consultant, I know that the task force can springboard off of that, but the goal is for Councilmember Ennis to be the leader of that task force, and as they move towards implementation, work with the city manager from a budgeting standpoint, and any resources that are required, and, and come back with some, Councilmember Ennis, I think it may even end up needing to be a workshop, perhaps, between your task force and Council, to kind of touch base as we move forward, but thought it would be great if we had someone to make some solid recommendations specific to our city, rather than saying that we were just gonna exactly follow the, the product of the consultant. So Councilmember Ennis, do you have any words of wisdom besides being so thankful that I ask you and you promised? I don't know if it was volunteered or voluntold, but you're, tag, you're it.
Oh, I'm scared. You've, you've tasked me with a, with a seriously important job, and, and one that we've needed for a long time, and I'm honored that you, that you thought I was up to it. We want to incorporate in the folks that are on this work group, as much of a cross-section as we can, but still keep it small enough so that it will be fleet of foot, and, and work prodigiously and get some recommendations for Councils. So that being said, we've got our work cut out for us.
Absolutely. One of the things that came up at BAIPP, and that I want the public to know, is even the Old Iron Bridge, and the aside is, yes, we all know it's not iron, but we also know in my lifetime, we're not gonna quit calling it the Old Iron Bridge. We, we, we all know that. It is the Old Iron Bridge. That, that too, when that is fully restored, we see that being a part of our, our cultural arts. We can see dance performances and, and gardens, and a bench to sit on, and, and it will become like a park as a part of our community. So there was some discussion about, you know, lighting and speakers on the bridge and things like that, and that could be a part of the cultural arts. We're really asking you to look at not only implementation, but maybe some long-term strategy, and also, quite frankly, the governance. And there had, there'd been some discussions about BAIPP, and the fantastic work that they've done, may become like a committee underneath that, an overarching board, and I'm not trying to give the answer while they work on it, I just wanna make sure, Councilmember Ennis, that with that cross-section of people that you have engaged in that task force, that they have an open mind, and, you know, don't feel like they've been boxed into the only, there's only one solution here, because, Council, I think we just want what works best for Bastrop, right? Mr. Job, is there anything else that, from a staff standpoint, that we need to share with Councilmember Ennis?
No, ma'am, I don't think so.
All right, so Councilmember Ennis, if you, if you can do it by the next Council meeting, that's fine. I know there's a lot going on, but when you're ready to name the members of it-
We'll have, we'll have it-
We'll come back to Council, yeah.
Yes.
That, that'd be great, and we'll give you guys some working time and make sure that staff's available to support you however you need with information.
Great, thank you.
Is there anything else anybody wants to talk about on that one?
[inaudible]
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. I think he'll do a fantastic job. All right, we're moving on to Staff and Board Reports, item six A, Update Regarding Emergency Management Performance Grant Program. This is a good one. Chief Rosales?
Council, City Manager, this is our EMPG grant that we go out for every year, we've been doing it since two thousand and eleven. It's a Emergency Management Performance Grant. It's related to cost sharing that we do between the local government, state government. Everybody that generally has an emergency management coordinator or emergency management team participates. There's certain things, requirements to, to stay eligible for it, you have to do exercises, we have to do lots of reports back to them. And so this year, we've asked for fifty percent, and that'll be for twenty-five percent for the emergency management coordinator, which will be myself, and then twenty-five percent funding for the Assistant Emergency Management Coordinator, which will be for the police chief. It's for our salaries, a percentage of our salaries, so twenty-five percent of our salary. That's just for, basically, it's reimbursement to us. We're not guaranteed the grant, and so when we apply for it, we usually get it, and then they, they alternate. So you're asking for twenty-five percent, sometimes they give you twelve, sometimes they give you fifteen, sometimes- So you're asking for 25%. Sometimes they give you 12. Sometimes they give you 15. Sometimes they give you all 25. It's up to them. It's, it's what gets shared amongst the, the, all the cities and all the, all the different organizations that apply. Um, so otherwise, it's just a notification that we are going to apply this year, um, and that we will see what we get at the end of the year. Does go back to the, uh, it's a revenue, so it's accounted for in the budget. I think we accounted for in the 2020 budget was for $32,000, uh, from this funding source. Um, and so it'll be, it's been projected in the, in the 2020. So, any questions?
Find more grants just like that one, right?
Absolutely.
Good job.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we're moving on to Citizens' Comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for Citizens' Comments?
No, Mayor.
All right, we're done with Citizens' Comments. Moving on to the Consent Agenda, we have only one item. Consider Action to Approve City Council Minutes from the January 28th Regular Meeting. Happy to entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers.
I'll second.
A second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. We're moving on to Items for Individual Consideration. Item 9A, Hold Public Hearing and Consider Action to Approve the First Reading of Ordinance Number 2020-03 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Adging the Development Manual and Article 4.2 plat requirements of the Bastrop Building Block Technical Manual, as shown in Exhibit A, Establishing Findings of Fact, Adoption and Amendment, a Repealing Clause, Severability and Enforcement, and Providing an Effective Date, and Move to Include on the Consent Agenda of the February 25th, 2020 City Council Meeting. Ms. Land?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Uh, so this item is to update our development manual. Uh, the development manual includes all of our major checklists for development, so zoning, plating, site developments, um, public improvement plans, which cover your streets and your infrastructure, um, and so on. And so these proposed updates are what either staff has identified as critical updates, or that have been, we've gotten feedback from the community, um, as being confusing, or, "Hey, don't y'all want this information?" And you didn't ask for it, um, and that kind of thing. So the first one is Updates to the Plat Checklist. Uh, we were missing some notes for plats in the ETJ. Um, and so, you know, we added those. There's a note about, uh, road acceptance in Bastrop County, when it's not going to be a city road accepted. Um, you know, they actually don't accept the roads until they take them to Commissioner's Court. And so we added a note that is called out in our interlocal agreement with the county. Um, we also added a note for just stating which ETJ are you in, the statutory or the voluntary. Um, that's just useful going forward. You can always, you know, that interlocal agreement about who's regulating which part of the jurisdiction may change. And so it's just really good reference, historical reference, on where we were and whose rules we were following that day. And then we just have some general, general cleanup. Um, you know, we updated references to the subdivision ordinance, to the B3 code, or city ordinances in general. Um, we added some information about the toad habitat that was missing, um, and clarified the signature blocks, which ones are required when. Any questions on the plat checklist?
Keep going. All right, you're doing good. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rogers?
Are you telling me these are updates to things we just got done voting on to be updated, and I just got a spiral?
No.
No.
Because the checklists aren't in your spiral?
The checklists were not in a spiral.
Okay.
Um, it was [laughing]. Yes, it is a, a large packet that is stapled, though. Um, I will say, one of the, the update to the tech manual that's called out, the plat checklist is duplicated in the technical manual, and so we're pulling out that duplication, um, and just referencing, hey, see, the development manual for the plat requirements.
So these are items that we missed through the 100 meetings we had going through this, is that correct?
It's, it's some cleanup.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit of cleanup, and, and some of it was, um, well, a lot of it, a lot of the information we added was information that is not on every single plat. Um, you know, it was more situational, and so, you know, we're putting them on here so that we remember them. It's very upfront to, um, applicants, what we're looking for, um, and what might apply to them. And if it doesn't apply, then you can say it doesn't apply, but if it does, at least you knew.
I guess I'm, I'm just concerned, 'cause we would, this was a painful process to go through. I'm just trying to make sure you think we're done now?
Let me, let me take a shot at this. I think what happened was, we approved it, and we had all the meetings, and we went over everything, and then we took it for a test drive. And it's been being test-driven since November, and the driver has said, "I don't really like the way some of your user, user manuals written. If you would clarify some things, it would make it easier for us."
Yes.
And so I believe, and Mayor Pro Tim Nelson may wanna speak to this, but when planning and zoning went over it, it's not so much major corrections, what we approved in November is wrong. It's a document that Council needs to approve, and I think we're just trying to make sure that it's a little more user-friendly.
Yes, ma'am. So the checklist are really kind of a high-level overview of, this is what's required with a submittal, and it gives you a high-level overview of your code requirements. We're not changing anything, a code requirement, you know, which you spent hours and hours, you know, debating and talking about and working through. This is just the document that gives you, "Hey, this is what a plat in Bastrop looks like and the things that we're looking for." And we're cleaning up that documentation. Um, you know, we're not necessarily, we're not changing any standards with this. We're just saying, "Hey, this is what we're looking for, and this is our document that helps you do that." It's really designed, a checklist is designed to help the applicant know what our expectations are.
Okay. And so do we think the test drive is over?
No, I, I think, I think it's gonna stay that way. And in fact, I think, um, I think City Manager may, may have a comment he wants to make on this topic.
Yeah, I think you'll see several revisions over the next year. We kinda talked about that as we were adopting the code. We knew that it was, that it was, it was good, but once we took it for a test drive, there'd be small changes. And, um, I've spoken with some folks about the mud checklist, and it's, it's, they're minor items that may be a little onerous to a mud, for example, that we're never gonna annex, or that we're never gonna maintain their infrastructure. So, for example, uh, they would like a manhole every 500 feet. Our city requirements are every three, that type of thing. So we'll, Tony and myself will work through that with their engineers, and then we'll bring back revisions as we go, probably for quite a while.
Just, just trying to be flexible. I don't think we'll have them every month, but I think we'll-
These are more like tweaks, not particularly updates, like you're updating the whole thing. It's more just like you're tweaking it, right? Okay. The word "update" sounds like we've been updating for a while, so.
Well, then we're tweaking them. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, would you like to comment?
Well, yeah, I, I, I think the best laid plans are, I think, I think we had the right intent. I think we had the right process in place. But it's, 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 it's a matter of, such is the signature blocks. The signature blocks weren't big enough. And when you start applying practical application to, to the process, and really listen to the people, and really getting more input, I think that's part of the process that we adopted, was it to be a dynamic process, with all of them input from, from all parties involved. So I, I would prefer the word "tweaking." I'm not real sure if it's a appropriate word, but, but these are not major, major updates. They, these are just refinements that we're making to a really good plan. So I, I commend y'all. I mean, the P and Z discussed it, and it was, it was one of the shortest P and Z meetings I've ever been to. So that group of people who really look over everything with, with, with a microscope, if they've, if they've vetted this process and said, "We're good with it," and they voted 7-0 to get it out, it's a good process, and, 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 uh, I comment to y'all, y'all really did a good job on, on addressing a lot of these issues, and so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ennis?
And as, as I understand it, we're eliminating some duplication, are we? Okay, great, thanks.
I can give you an example of one of those tweaks. Um, uh, the 24 by 36 is how the size it submitted many times in the format. We also have a, uh, uh, help me out here, 34 by 24.
24 by 34.
There we go.
22 by 34.
So we may allow both, is my point. That's the kind of tweaks that we'll be doing. No big change, just certain, um, formats are larger.
But if you only have one-size plans, if you're an engineering company that only has one-size plans, and on the checklist it says it won't take that size, then it's like, you're killing me for no reason, you know?
It's thousands of dollars to make those upgrades, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for staff? You, you, are you done?
No.
I thought you had a couple more.
Not yet, a couple more.
All right, yeah, let's, let's get you through.
All right, so the site plan up, or adjustments, we'll call them.
[laughing]
We left off the Fire Department's general notes, and then we had the 2009 International Fire Code referenced, which we updated just after the B3 code, so we're updating it to 2018. Uh, and then the other one is actually a new checklist, and that is a public improvement checklist specific to muds, which are municipal utility districts. That is what Mr. Jobe was speaking to earlier. Um, you know, we are still reviewing streets and infrastructure in these areas, but they may not be fully subject to City of Bastrop standards. Uh, so we adjusted and allowed some flexibility for those alternate standards in this checklist.
And Council, you'll remember that, um, the statutory ETJ is the one mile outside of the city limits, and hence the word "statutory." It's state statute that defines the ETJ. And one of the reasons that we used to make them follow all of our subdivisions was because you, you were generally on an annexation plan, and our friends at the Capitol have taken away that opportunity, so it lessens the likelihood that we are going to aggressively be annexing. If there is someone in our statutory ETJ that is wanting to be annexed, they are more likely to follow our standards, because they will be wanting us to annex them. In the situation of a mud that's quite far out of town, a part of our huge ETJ, they have no desire to be annexed, and they're going to own and maintain their own system, it becomes onerous of, it really, why are we making them follow our way? So that's one of the reasons there's a new checklist. Is that correct, Ms. Land?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does that make sense to everybody? All right, I, oh, I thought, I thought that was the last one that I had in my, okay, keep going.
I added a couple slides, mainly because there wasn't a slide about the tech manual update, which, as I said earlier, just removing some dupe, and then P and Z's recommendation. Um, they wanted us to add an item on the site plan checklist, referencing exterior building materials and the requirements for a certificate of appropriateness if you're in a historic district.
And we did that?
Uh, we have not yet, but we will prior to, to the next one, um, because the deadline for this packet was the same night as P and Z.
Can we, could, if a council member wanted to, could they pass it with adding that? Could their motion include that this time?
I believe so.
Everyone's looking at you, Alan. Can, will they, all right. Just keep that in mind, Council, when you're making motions. You might wanna leave that slide up. Is that it?
That is it.
All right. I would like to open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
Does anybody wanna speak? All right, I'm officially closing the public hearing. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Madam Mayor, move to approve the first reading of the Ordinance 2020-03, with the added addition of the Site Development Plan Checklist, including the notes on the Eiridale Historic District.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
I, I will second, but I would, I'd like to add the amendment that's not just Eiridale, it's the downtown, uh, uh, help me, uh, historic-
Bastrop Commercial Historic District.
That too. Uh, would you agree to that amendment, Mayor Pro Tim?
Absolutely.
Then I second.
Alan, did they write the, may, did they make the right motion? Did we cover it?
That, that's acceptable, Mayor.
All righty. I have a motion, and a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, a second from Councilmember Ennis, blessed by the city attorney. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. It will be on the consent agenda for February 25th. Thank you very much, Ms. Land. Council, we're moving on to the bottom of Page 2, Item 9B. Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2020-16 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Approving the Bastrop Police Department to Apply for a Grant from the 2020 CAPCOG Department of Justice Grant for a Major Critical Scene Lighting System at the total cost of $10,948.97, with no matching funds, from the City of Bastrop authorizing the interim Chief of Police as the Grantee's Authorized Official, providing for a Severability Clause and establishing an effective date. Chief Nagy?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Uh, so yes, we're going to apply for the 2020 JAG Grant, or the Justice Assistance Grant. And what we're gonna apply for is some very high-tech, critical incident scene lighting. So this is gonna be an example, and this is gonna be part of that system. But what this system will do is it'll enable, um, my investigators to invest, investigate, uh, high-profile crimes at nights. Uh, you know, if we unlucky enough to get some sort of major incident on a street that's not well-lit, we can bring these out very quickly. They just go in the back of a vehicle, and they light up the whole area, and we could actually bring up to three. And also, that could be used on, if we get any major crashes on any of the streets or any of the highways, particularly if we get a fatality crash that we're gonna be investigating at night. We need to light that up as best as possible. And a good example is if you guys have seen, um, if you're going through construction zones, and sometimes on the back of those implements, they have the big diffusers on, on their lights, and it lights up everything very evenly. That's an example of what these can do. And then last, we would also like to use them during some of our nighttime special events, such as Halloween. Uh, we can put those up before or after, just, uh, during, and they will really add to the public safety, and then our officer's safety, and then staff's safety as well, as we're out at night.
Any staff, uh, Councilmember Ennis?
I have a question for you. Does the 360 adapt to the directional, or are they two separate types of lights?
So what I'm asking for is actually gonna be three, three lights, but yes, so the 360 can fold out into directional.
Okay, that's where I was going.
And there's gonna be two others that are also just fully directional. This goes up on a boom. It's pretty high-tech stuff. 24-hour battery, it's the greatest.
And in your examples in the, in the packet, since I live across the street from the episode, uh, where the child was hit at Halloween, um, where would, you, would you just light the streets up at night, uh, on something like that? Or would it, you'd wait till a, a, an episode happened?
Oh, no, we would like, like, if, uh, for example, the Halloween, if it's really dark and we wanna, um, we, we wanna keep, I guess, the ambiance of Halloween, because it's nighttime. But if there's a particular area that needs some attention, we would just, we could light that up. And I think that these actually have a degree of lumen, so we can, um, light it up with a high degree of lumens, or actually lowered a little bit as well, just to add that, that safety.
Great, thank you.
Like a parking lot might be a, a good place. When the event's over, light up the parking lot-
Yes.
-so people can get to their car.
Exactly.
All right, I'm all about non-matching, um, [inaudible].
You said it was battery-operated, so after, do, like, let's say you use them, do you take the battery back and charge it? Is that, like, the rechargeable batteries?
So they're rechargeable lithium batteries. Uh, the greatest thing is they last about 24 hours. There's no gas generators we have to pull along. Um, and they can just fold in the back of, uh, any one of our vehicles and be deployed really quickly.
Oh, that's cool.
And then taken down quickly as well.
Oh, cool.
Council? Oh, Councilmember Jackson?
No, I was gonna make a motion, but I'll wait, I can wait to that.
Well, go ahead.
Okay. I was gonna make a motion that we approve Resolution Number R 2020-16, uh, Resolution of the City Council Approving the Bastrop Police Department to Apply for a Grant that's non-matching through the JAG program, Department of Justice.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson to approve Resolution Number R 2020-16, and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief Nagy. Good job. All right, Council, we're on 9C. Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2020-17 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Appointing Mayor Pro Tim Nelson as the City of Bastrop's Clean Air Coalition Representative, as required in Article 2 of the Clean Air Coalition of the Capital Area Council of Government Bylaws and Establishing an Effective Date. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson's done a fantastic job, both on CAPCOG and on Campo. And I think the discussion we had earlier about the scoring and the representation is just proof in the pudding that, uh, we are, the community and the citizens are well-served by him being involved. And I strongly recommend someone make a, a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis, and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, is there anything you'd like to say?
You're absolutely right, Mayor. This is, this is a process, and through this, this subcommittee that, that I'm- This is a process, and through this subcommittee that I'm on, I got appointed as our representative on the executive committee, as well as some other committees, and the more play that we have with this group of people on a regional basis, the more opportunities I think are going to be presented to us to find funding mechanisms for a lot of our projects. So, I'm honored by y'all's pick.
I am. Our expectation is that not only we get our fair share, but we want more than our fair share of all of the funding that is available. I have a motion...
No promises there.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We're moving on to item 9D. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2020-18 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the Bastrop Fire Department to accept donations for renovations to Fire Station 1 in the amount of $12,500, authorizing the fire chief to accept the donation as the authorized official, providing for a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Chief Rosales?
Mayor, council. So, we, in FY 2020, we did, we asked for 24-hour coverage to add a fourth and then to do 24-hour staffing at one of our stations. Our stations are, were not designed, they were designed for volunteers, so they weren't designed for 24-hour staffing. We had asked in the budget, and the budget got kind of tweaked to the 2019 version, and so we didn't get renovation funds. We got very limited funds, and so what we've done, we've gotten creative. So, I'll kind of show you what we're working with. So, what we're asking for is to add four sleeping quarters, a shower, and expand our kitchen and our living room area to our station downtown. This is our current, what it currently looks like downtown at Station, the Station downtown. You have, see if I can do this. Trey, you know how to do this.
I bet you can do it.
Oh, there you go.
So close.
So, here's where our gear locker rooms currently exist. This was previously Chief DeArment's office, which is now turned into, today it is actually the living room for our guys. This was a storage closet that we used for gear storage. We took all that gear and we moved it up to the other fire station. We've emptied it, and it's been turned into a bedroom. So, currently, today, it's a bedroom. This is our kitchen area. It does not have a stove or any, it just has a refrigerator and a sink, and that's it. Just running water, basically, in a microwave. This is currently a storage closet. It's still a storage closet today. This is our bathroom area here. This is where we intend on putting a shower here, and I'll show that here in a slide later on. And then this room here, which used to be a lobby, got turned into an office that was previously my office. It's way smaller than any of the other rooms. And so, what we did is we waited for the renovation here at City Hall. When the renovation here at City Hall completed, myself and Chief DeArment moved to City Hall and took up two of the offices here so that we could turn the station as it is today into sleeping quarters, so that we could go to 24-hour coverage as what we anticipated doing October 1. And so, there were delays with the City Hall and stuff like that, so we didn't get to move in until here recently. So, as of February 1st, we did go to 24 hours. There are 24-hour, two persons, 24 hours a day at Station 1. If you see the garage door open there, they're there. If you see the engine there, they're there. Feel free to stop in, say hi.
Bring food?
Bring food, yeah, they love food. Snacks, they're always snacking. So, this was, this is what we intend to do with the remodel. What we intend to do is to knock down the walls where the previously, oh, come on. Come on. Oh, there you go. Previously, there was that office that Chief DeArment was in and the storage closet. We intend to knock that down and turn that into a large kitchen, living room area, all-in-one, and to put a stove and a refrigerator, and to open that up and have a bar, bar-height countertop so that they can have, like, that as their kitchen table. And then to turn this front here into the officers' quarters where they can do their reports, things like that, where they'll have a computer. And then we intend to add a shower into the men's room. Currently, there's a urinal and a toilet. We're going to remove the toilet, move it over to where the urinal's at, put the toilet back, and turn the toilet into a shower. And so, that'll give them the ability to have showers. We're also going to just add a couple of, like, new features with doors and things like that. Sorry. Thing, a door into the gear locker room here, and then we're going to add some stairs, and I'll show you what the upstairs is going to look like and why we're going to add that. Do you have a question?
What about lady firefighters?
Lady firefighters. So, there are two restrooms. I apologize, there are two restrooms. So, there's a male restroom here and a female restroom. And the male restroom, we're going to turn into a unisex.
Okay.
And that'll allow for the shower to be utilized as well, and there'll be a door kind of separating so that we'll be able to be locked and so that they have privacy.
Great, thanks.
Upstairs currently, this is currently what it looks like today. It's just a decking. When you go there, you're just, you're looking at the top floor, and it's just open above. Previously, it was used for storage. We just had a whole bunch of storage shelves up there, and it was just stored with all kinds of stuff. We recently went through and moved everything to the end, all the way to the far left of that screen. We moved everything down there, put all the shelving there, and cleared everything up there. The only thing currently up there are two AC units, and we plan to kind of push those out to the side, and I'll show you what we're going to do. So, upstairs, what we intend to do is there will be a storage on this left side here and storage on the right side, and that's where the AC units are, will be located. We'll move them. And then we intend to add four bedrooms. As you can see, all four bedrooms here. And then we intend to add a stairway to go up. The reason for the stairway is our rules require us to have a, kind of like an airlock system when we are, when we have bay, when we have the vehicles, you know, with the exhaust in the bays when you have sleeping quarters. So, you have an option of either doing a vehicle where they capture the exhaust off the truck, and those, you tend to cost about $10,000 to $15,000 a vehicle. Or you can do an airlock. And so, what the airlock is, you just essentially have two doors between you and the exterior so that if one door got left open, the other door would stay closed, and that the exhaust would not make it into the room while they're sleeping. And so, that's what the, so that's why we did the stairs. Also, there is a beam upstairs that will run right there along the center. And so, what we did is instead of having you walk down a hallway and duck, because that beam is probably about this high, and so instead of having you duck under the beam, we've split it and put the stairway to go on each side so that you would pick which side you're on, and the beam would be in the middle of those stairs and you wouldn't see it. And so, we kind of designed it around that. So, this is kind of what it would look like. As you see the airlock here, there's, the door is downstairs, and there's no access other than the two on the end, which would be locked. And so, the only way to get in would be from here or from downstairs. And so, that's what would create that airlock system for us. So, that's what it would look like after the remodel. So, what we're asking for, we went out to our partners in the community, and we asked for donations for materials, for labor. A lot of our volunteers are contractors, carpenters, plumbers, electricians, and so a lot of our volunteers already have those traits. And so, what they're going to do is they're going to donate and volunteer their time to us to come in and frame. We're going to do like a Saturday, a couple Saturdays, and do a work group and just come up and just frame everything up. McCoy's is going to donate all the lumber up to the dollar amount of $6,000. Lowe's is going to donate $3,500 of sheet rock. And so, our guys are going to do all the labor, and we're going to have a contractor. He's a, he's a commercial contractor. He's going to do all the oversight. He's going to oversee everything. He's going to go down and pull our permits for us, but us as the volunteers are going to do the labor. And so, that will cut down on the cost. So, what we kind of anticipate with this was going to be a $65,000 project, and we got it down to about $1,200 bucks, and it's going to, sorry, $12,000. Sorry. Yeah, we got it down to about $12,000 in donations, and then the rest of it is labor, and then the city's going to, we're going to put in, we have about $10,000 that we're going to put in for all the trades, the mechanical, the electrical, the plumbing. And so, we're going to pull permits and have those done by licensed professionals. And so, we will just do most of the labors, like for the shower, we're going to have to hammer out the concrete. And so, we'll do the hammering out of the concrete to reduce the cost for the plumber. And so, things like that. And so, what we're asking for is to allow us to accept those donations above our normal, what we would normally be able to accept. And so, that's why I bring the resolution to you, and I'm asking for help. The other thing we wanted to talk about was, because we have transitioned to the full-time starting on February 1st, some of the things that we got out of it by doing this is, one of our goals for FY 2020 was to hire a full-time inspector. We hired Chief DeArment, who's been fantastic. But one of our other goals were to complete renovations and then to reduce our response time from 12 minutes to six minutes. And so, what I want to talk about is this bottom, is it 10-minute response time for our paid staff. So, the other night, we had a structure fire. It was actually outside of our district, but it was our first due in. It was for EST number 2 in Tahitian. Our day staff was called immediately to it to assist with EST 2. Our paid staff had a 10-minute response time. Our first due apparatus with volunteers was 26 minutes. So, we shot, we took 16 minutes off of that by just having paid staff at the station.
That's awesome.
So, what that did for us is we saved a house. So, if you see here, there was a, they had a, I believe, a hot tub here on this, correct, chief?
Looks like a hot tub.
Hot tub here, and they had some coals that were knocked over by raccoons on top, caught the hot tub on fire, which then caught the deck on fire, which then started underneath, and it took off down a ravine and then also kind of burned the deck up there. Well, because we got there so quickly and everybody was able to, we saved the house. All there was damage was just the porch.
That's awesome.
So, had we had another 16 more minutes, it probably would have got into a house, and it probably would allow, it's a 2,000-square-foot structure. And so, we, it definitely has paid for itself. We've had several calls like that, and I can mention more and more and more. And so, it's a huge, huge step for us, so...
Kudos for your ingenuity.
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. So, any questions about the resolution? Again, just to accept their donations on our behalf and for us to do the work.
Councilmember Ennis?
Am I mistaken, but I seem to remember in some discussions we had in the past that our response time drives our insurance rates?
Absolutely.
And you're improving our response time is going to have an impact on how we're rated as a city in our insurance rate.
Correct. Our, I think it was our three-year work plan was to work towards our ISO rating, our insurance rating, to work towards that, and part of that is the ladder truck that we've purchased that you all allowed us to purchase. The 24-hour staffing is part of it, and so as we keep growing with those, we will be able to reduce our insurance rating, and that will get us to the lower insurance. Absolutely.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Which will save every property owner in Bastrop with that better rating. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Absolutely, yep.
Chief, is there a sign-up list for volunteers to help y'all out?
Absolutely, I will more than, I will send it out and let you know. Absolutely. Yeah, we can, it'll be probably a Saturday or Sunday or a couple Saturdays and Sundays, but absolutely, I'll let you know.
I'm a good help.
Yes, sir.
I'm not commenting. Mayor, Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, I just want to say, say, thank you, chief.
Yes.
And I'm just very proud of your leadership and you guys moving up, moving on up to the east side.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, just outstanding job. With that, would anyone like to make a motion? Move to approve. I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Just cannot say enough, good things, Chief Rosales.
Thank you.
Just excellent leadership, and thank you to the paid staff, the volunteer staff.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure Ms. Waldron helped you with the financing, and can we do this, and do we have enough?
Absolutely.
And it just, I know you guys, when you work on these things, you work on them as a team, and it's very, very much appreciated. Thank you, city manager.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, guys.
All right, any other comments or questions? Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and...
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Nelson will be excellent help, and I know he'd be dependable, and I'm sure there's other folks that'll want to help you as well, so good luck.